Good evening. The San Dimas City Council Meeting, Successor Agency and Housing Authority Meeting, and Public Facilities Finance Corporation Meeting will come to order. Please rise. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you have a roll call, please?
Here.
Councilmember Nakano?
Present.
Councilmember Vienna?
Here.
Mayor Bedar?
Here.
Councilmember Weber is absent. We do have four council members in attendance for a quorum.
Chris?
Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, due to the significant policy issues associated with other business item number two, discussion, consideration, and possible direction revising policies and procedures related to enforcement of Chapter 13.36 of the San Dimas Municipal Code as it relates to community tree management, we will ask that we table that item until the first meeting in January, January 10, to allow all council members to be here for the discussion.
Any objections?
No.
Okay. So, anyone here to talk about trees, that'll be January the 10th, and we'll just take it to that portion. Unfortunately, Councilman Weber is tied up at work. Okay? We have a recognition. Old Town Antiques. That doesn't mean that the person in owner is old. It means that your store's been around for a long time. Okay? Cindy, would you like to step up to the, you know, and I'll read this?
I'm old now, see?
Old Town Antiques. Whereas Cindy Williams is the owner of Old Town Antiques in downtown San Dimas, and whereas Old Town Antiques is a family-owned business operating since 1992, and whereas Cindy Williams is a dedicated volunteer in the city of San Dimas and its community, whereas the city of San Dimas stands proud in recognizing a long-established resident and business owner, Cindy Williams, and now therefore I, Mayor Emmett G. Bedar, Mayor Pro Tem John Ebner, Councilmember Eric Nakano, Ryan A. Vienna, and Eric Weber, hereby congratulate Old Town Antiques for its 30 years of operation in the city of San Dimas. In witness thereof, I, Mayor Emmett G. Bedar, here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of San Dimas to be affixed this 13th day of December 2022.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Oh, yeah.
Cindy, would you like to say a few words?
Just a few.
Wait a minute.
Real quick. Thank you very much, council staff, and certainly the city. Seems like 20, but I guess it's been 30. So, I just want to thank everybody. You know, when we first came in here as antique stores, we weren't given a real good reception. And as time went by and people saw what we had to offer, and that we were legitimate business people in downtown, the attitude greatly changed. And we all recognize it, and we all appreciate it. The support that's been given through everybody here in the city, from our chamber, Sylvia, and everybody associated, has really made the difference in the downtown as far as our shops are concerned. So, on behalf of me especially, I really appreciate this, and I'm looking forward to many more, we'd like to say thank you just for everything that you guys do. When we talk, you listen, and you have no idea what it does to a small business when you know that you have the support of the city. So, I would like to thank you for everything that you've done for me. Thank you.
Thank you. The YWCA City Champion Award. On Thursday, November 10, the city of San Dimas attended a San Gabriel Valley YWCA Champions of Change Award Luncheon. YWCA is one of the community partners that allows the city to offer a free, low-cost nutrition program for our seniors' community members aged 60-plus. The city of San Dimas received the City Champion Award and recognized the city's efforts during the COVID-19 pandemic and beyond. Our partnership with the YWCA enabled the city to serve 73,534 meals to our seniors during 2021. When combined with similar efforts in other cities who partnered with the YWCA, local cities served approximately 2.1 million meals during the pandemic in the years 2020 and 2021. The city's values its partnership with the YWCA and looks forward to an ongoing collaboration in the future. I attended this luncheon, and it was pretty interesting to see just how the YWCA participates with our Parks and Recreation people, and I do want to commend the Parks and Rec for that partnership they've developed. It's pretty eye-opening when you start talking about 2.1 million meals. And during that pandemic, it was greatly appreciated. I had many seniors contact me and talk to me about how they felt and how they were treated by the city and the Parks and Rec Department. But congratulations to the Parks and Rec. Congratulations to the people behind the program. Oral Communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the city council on any item on this agenda, or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual item except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Cindy, did you want to come back up?
I did want to say one thing, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing to do with that. We are experiencing a problem downtown, and it's becoming more prevalent. I know, you know, the homeless word. We're coming to our businesses, and they're sleeping on our front. They've been in my truck again in the back. They're going through things in the back of our stores. It's not just me. I'm representing the downtown now when I'm speaking. And yesterday, I had to call the sheriffs, and, you know, they're so good. They come right away. They take care of the problem. Just, we're very blessed to have them. They really do come when we call. But it is becoming a little bit more of an ongoing problem than it has been. I think part of it's the cold and the rain that that's, you know, in the summer, it doesn't seem to be as bad. But they are on our private property. I'm not sure exactly what the law says as far as public property is concerned, you know, to talk about that. But definitely, we've seen an uptick in the last 30 days, to the point where I can't open my front door. They're sleeping in my flowerbed. I've had three or four of the other people said that their back trash has gone through. So, just, you know, so you're aware of it. I'm not sure what can be done, but I do want you to know that it's an ongoing problem, and I'm assuming it's associated with the cold and the weather. But we just wanted to get it on file. Thank you.
Thank you.
Margie Green?
Good evening, everyone. First off, I want to say congratulations to Cindy for all the good times that she's put in over the last 30 years, and also to Chuck Coyne for all the time he's put in too with the schools. But I'm here to talk about the San Dimas Historical Society. It's our holiday boutique time. We're only open on Saturday and Sunday for the holiday boutique, and we really have some fantastic items in there this Saturday and Sunday from 12 to 4. Please come on by. We have some marvelous things, some very, very great prices, and I think they're even going to be cutting the prices in half again. So, please come by. It's at the Walker House from 12 to 4, and that's at 121 North San Dimas Avenue in the Walker House on the second floor. So, please join the Historical Society, and happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you have any cards?
No more speaker cards, ma'am.
Anyone wishing to speak to the council, feel free. Sylvia, you want to talk? And then, ma'am, I recognize you after this. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sylvia Melendez. I'm with the San Dimas Chamber of Commerce, and we'd also like to congratulate Mr. Coyne. Congratulations on your retirement. We would also like to congratulate Cindy Williams on her 30 years in business. Congratulations. We'd like to thank the council for recognizing her in her years of business and all her hard work in the community. On a personal, I'd like to congratulate her and thank her for all her hard work and dedication to our ambassador group, our San Dimas Corridor, as well as the San Dimas Beer and Wine Walk. In addition, I'd like to wish her a very happy birthday tomorrow. In addition, we'd like to thank everybody that participated in our Shop Local campaign in November and December. Although the contest is over, the virtual map specials are still active, and they're active throughout the rest of the year and some until the start of the new year. Thank you to all the businesses that participated, and please check our social media and website to locate the virtual map and all the specials, as well as all the different locations that participated. We would please remind the public that if you're going to shop, drink, or dine in San Dimas, please consider shopping locally, shopping small, and also with San Dimas Chamber members. To locate a list of Chamber members, they are listed in our directory on sanddimaschamber.com. Lastly, we would like to thank the community for their support of the San Dimas Chamber programming, all our efforts, and the events throughout the year. We look forward to working with you again in the new year. The San Dimas Chamber office will be closed in the next, so next week until the end of the year, but we will reopen on Monday, January the 2nd. For any additional information on any of the topics that I covered, please contact me at the San Dimas Chamber office at 909-592-318, or by email at info@sanddimashamber.com. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Linda, and I live in the Montevus Apartments. And I'm here specifically to thank, to thank everybody here in City Hall. I know that, what's her name? Lily and the other gentleman that works. I already told them what I'm going to say here. I just wanted to let you know that I am very pleased with everything I've brought to you. It's like, I've been fighting with it for about four or five years, and this year was awesome. Just to mention a few, I needed new carpet where I was, and it kept on going on, going on. Finally, we got it done. All this is in this year, and these are things that have been going on for four years. We needed new washers and dryers. We got them really neat with digital. You don't use, they're coinless, so that's pretty cool. The floor needed polishing, cleaning. They did that. It's just a bunch of stuff. The walls were filthy because of the summers and the suit and the smoke and whatnot. That was addressed. Everything I addressed to Lily. It's like, it's like everything has come to. The big issue that we all know are the windows, okay? Finally, I understand that we're getting the new windows, and we're looking forward to that, hopefully before the, for the summer, the winter, the spring. And I posted on Nextdoor about the excellent zero tolerance for graffiti, and I'm very, very pleased with how the city is so effective. I call in and the next day, maybe the next two days after, it's a done deal, and I think this is a great deterrent. That's what keeps our city so beautiful. And I want to thank you all for having all these things, which makes us very different, and our city is just so unique. Let's see, what else did I have here? Oh, the Christmas extravaganza was absolutely awesome. I think there was a great, great turnout. It really made up for 20. We had nothing. 21, it was kind of like here and there, but 22 was like a blast. I really enjoyed it, and it was really good. So, on that note, I want to thank everybody for everything that I know that I've asked for, but I can only say that I know for sure that other issues that have been addressed throughout the city, the Parks Departments, the public service, et cetera, everything that's there, I feel very reassured, yeah, that everything you guys are working on has been an incredible job. So, Merry Christmas, stay safe, and God bless, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas to you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? You know, at this time, it's going to be great pleasure that I have an opportunity to introduce a member of our school board who has spent a tremendous amount of time over the last 17 years. I think we're all familiar with our birthdays, but as you notice, over the last few years, it's not been a birthday day. It's been, I want a birthday month. So, all our children think they're going to get prizes and presents every week, or going to get taken out to dinner. Well, in Chuck's particular case, this is Chuck's retirement month. We, I've attended a couple of functions that he's been at. We recognized it at the last meeting, but tonight, I'm very honored to have Chuck Coyne here, and I'm going to read a proclamation, and I'm going to allow Chuck to say a few words. City of San Dimas Proclamation, the 2022 Retirement Celebration of Chuck Coyne. Whereas Chuck Coyne was elected to the Bonita Unified School District Board of Governors on November 8, 2005, and whereas Chuck's activism and involvement with the school district began when his daughter was attending Gladstone Elementary School, and whereas while serving as a member and then chairman of the school site council, he helped the group provide guidance and support to the school, worked with the school staff and management to implement innovative programs, and whereas Chuck was also active in the Gladstone PTA as vice president, Ways and Means, and was selected to the Bonita District PTA Parliamentarian, and now therefore I, Mayor Emmett G. Bedar, Mayor Pro Tem John Ebner, and council members Eric Nakano, Ryan A. Vienna, and Eric Weber, do hereby express our hearty congratulations to Chuck Coyne on occasion of his retirement. In witness thereof, I, Emmett G. Bedar, have here on set my hand and cause the seal of the city of San Dimas to be affixed this December 13, 2022. Chuck, did you meet me at the podium? Chuck, do you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Bedar. Now, Emmett made the mistake of promising that I could go over the three minutes this evening. It'll be my one and only time I'll be able to address the city council for more than three minutes, so I'm going to take advantage of the opportunity. I'd like to introduce my wife, Jeanette. We will be married 40 years next year. Looking forward to a big celebration then also. Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. My name is Chuck Coyne, and I would like to thank the council for the proclamation I received honoring my 17 years of service on the Bonita Unified School District Board. To me, it really represents and honors the very close and positive relationship between the district and our friends here at the city of San Dimas. My first memory of San Dimas is from the summer of 1964. I was 12 years old, and my dad and I had lunch at Roadies one day when he had some work to do nearby. Needless to say, a lot has changed since then. My wife, Jeanette, and I have lived in San Dimas for just over 30 years. Our daughter was born in San Dimas Hospital and grew up enjoying many of the city's recreational opportunities. Mrs. Kubota's art classes, karate in the Plumber Building, all manner of programs, including learning to swim at the rec center, which led her to a summer high school and college job at Raging Waters, where she met the young man she just married this year. And in their gratitude, they moved to Denver. I'm proud to be a part of the thread of the fabric of this school district's history, which goes back 100 and nearly 150 years. In 1875, the San Dimas School District was the very first school district in this area when the state required a minimum of eight students to form a district. California had only been a state for five years, but it already had enough bureaucracy to declare that regulation. And I'm sure you guys appreciate state regulations and bureaucracies as well as we do. The San Dimas School District held its first classes and built its first school near the mouth of the San Dimas Canyon. Good schools attract good people, and over the years, other districts came into being. Districts came and went, names changed, and in the 1957, the smaller districts in the San Dimas and Laverne were incorporated into the Bonita Unified School District. Fast forward, and we now rank in the top 10% of all California Unified Districts based on academic achievement. In addition, the California Reading Coalition ranked Bonita Unified's reading program the best in the state. That's first out of 287 of the most populous districts throughout the state. Our schools, one, are in the top 15% nationwide in the ranking by U.S. News and World Report. We are ranked San Gabriel's best, San Gabriel Valley's best school district by the San Gabriel Valley Tribune, and for the third year in a row, Bonita Unified was voted a top workplace by the Inland News Group. Good relationships precede good results. 20-plus years ago, the district's relationships within and outside of the district were lacking, and results like that above were unobtainable. I'm honored to have spent the bulk of my time on the board with current members Glenn Criman and Jim Elliott, and retired members Diane Coach and Patty Lotterell, along with visionary superintendents such as Dr. Bob Otto. visionary superintendents such as Dr. Bob Otto, Dr. Gary Rapkin, Carl Coles, and now interim superintendent Matt Ween. We worked together over the years to restore and strengthen those relationships, which has, which has helped lead us to our current trajectory of ever improving results like those just mentioned. Also, some more good news, the state just released results today that reflect how well this district actually fared through the pandemic years, while others stumbled and even fell behind. And also, on the subject of good relationships, I would like to thank the mayor, city councilman, and city manager Chris Constantine, who attended my retirement party hosted by the school district last week. Emmett had some very nice things to say about me, and you had, thank him for his kind words. However, I do have to clarify what he said about something that came down in 2007. Now, I don't know if it was the first thing he did after getting elected to the city council, but it was one of the first things, and he was actually the one who asked to meet with their, Dr. Gary Rapkin and myself to lunch and to begin repairing the district's relationship with the city, not me. Now, I say that with utmost respect for your many years as, as a chief detective for the Los Angeles Police Department, uh, but I, in my observation, I think detectives are, are, are very excellent at finding out what's the facts was after the case. Um, in my, in my career, I, I had been accused of being a trained observer, uh, and reporter, and trained observers observe things in real time, um, and so, uh, I put my observations of how that all happened above yours, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, and that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you.
In all seriousness, the work of maintaining trust and being trustworthy goes on today and into tomorrow. I'm looking forward to seeing more positive results from our city-school district partnership far into the future. Thank you for your support of the Benita Unified School District, and happy holidays to you and yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Was anybody on the council like to say anything to Chuck, or say, uh, hospital, want to bagels, goodbye? Stop by when you have more time?
Well, I, I've known Chuck for a while, and I just briefly want to appreciate, want to express my appreciation for everything you've done, and, um, as you said, uh, it, it may not be a coincidence that when, um, you got on the board, when Emmett got involved, uh, helping, I don't know, just talking to, talking to the superintendent and the rest of the board, but, but Chuck, I think that, uh, your dedication and just your interest in the welfare of children and, and knowing that education is, is really where it's, where it's at, is, um, just a, a model, and, uh, and you showed that all those years on the ci, on the school board, so thank you very much.
I too will echo the comments of my colleagues. I think, um, there's a lot of things that go on, and sometimes, uh, my wife and I would tune in to watch the school board meetings here and there, and it's, it's sometimes, we have to be mindful of our positions respectively, to stay in our lanes, um, but I never worried about the school district because I knew people like you and the others you've mentioned provide good, solid leadership to what was going on, and there's enough diversity of thought to ensure that the best result was occurring. And so, I've appreciated you running, I've appreciated your service, I congratulate you on what you've achieved, and, uh, hopefully you'll stick around, and we'll see you around town, and, uh, thank you for everything you've done, especially last week, we had our, our meeting, and even since, uh, you know, Emmett and I had talked even when I got elected, you know, saying, hey, you know, there's work to be done here, um, you know, what can we do? And, uh, it's been fun meeting with you, uh, just since I've gotten more involved in that area, um, to continue furthering our partnership together. So, thank you, sir, for everything.
As a product of San Dimas Public Schools, I just want to thank you for your years of service and for making the school district even more excellent than when I was a student there. I know it's a result of your hard work, your dedication, and your vision, and I wish you a good retirement, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Chuck. Maybe you could help your wife walk those dogs. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one vote, one motion, unless a member of the city council requests a separate discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval, but I did want to comment on item number four at some point.
I'll, I'll second the motion, and...
Maybe prior to this, have a vote, do you, uh, wanna talk, or do you wanna?
We could vote, and then I can, we can comment.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's four, uh, one, with one abstention. Or one, yeah, one abstention. Okay, Ryan?
Thank you, sir. Since my, uh, election to the council in 2017, I've had a couple of unique honors. One of them was getting on the mosquito board, uh, another one was being placed as the equestrian commission liaison despite my allergies to horses, and lastly, is sitting on the city's finance committee, which I assure you is very interesting, very fascinating, and very deep. But, I will say, what has been awesome is watching the city since 2017 being more intimately involved with, with the mayor at the time, and then working with staff, and then watching staff transition into different roles, putting the right people in the right place, uh, and then watching our city leadership change and our leadership team change, um, leading up to this last audit meeting. And at one point during those audit meetings, if you don't know, uh, they go and they present their independent audits, and they talk about all these really awesome things, and then eventually, they excuse the city staff, uh, to have like the real discussion, uh, with the council, which really isn't anything more than us asking any questions that we may be interested in, uh, or anything of that nature. I have to say that, um, having watched, having worked in some auditing functions at work professionally, having watched Chris come into the city, having watched Michael be put into the role that he's been in, um, the way that the city is doing its finances now from the first audit I've seen to where we've gotten to today, um, has just been amazing. And, and not only is it amazing, um, you're being praised for it, uh, not just from me, but from the auditors themselves, um, who have really been complimentary of the fact that the city has that transparency now. The city is wanting to engage in things that it hadn't, and the city is looking at things differently now. Um, we've migrated since 2017 to new software, we've dealt with different findings that had to deal with migrating to and from software solutions and processes, and making processes change to align with better accounting practices, uh, and then even as far as most recently, looking at doing performance auditing. And the idea that our financial audits and our performance audits marry together for the interest of transparency and accountability to the public is huge, and so, I commend all of you for that, and I wanted the public to know that, that I really hope that when people look at this particular financial statement and report, and when they look at the things that will be coming down the pipe in the near future, um, that the city is moving in the right direction towards becoming more transparent, uh, more accountable, and, uh, as most recently, having a city manager that's not afraid of those things, not afraid of those audits, and has that trust with the council to be vulnerable, if you will, uh, but to be accountable, I think is commendable. So, Chris, good job, Michael, all of you, very proud of you, and keep doing what you're doing for the city.
Anything further? Okay, we'll, we'll move on to, uh, other business. A discussion and consideration to initiate a municipal code text amendment to amend section 10.32.030 of the San Dimas Municipal Code to clarify truck routes, boundaries within the city. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Genevieve Amaro, I'm the administrative aide for the Public Works Department. This evening, I'm gonna be discussing the consideration of a possible action to initiate a municipal code text amendment for our current truck routes. Um, basically, we'd just be cleaning up the text right now, just to give you guys a little bit of background, uh, this has not seen an amendment to this code since May of 1998. So, we're referencing some kind of outdated information, like Route 30 is no longer Route 30, it's, uh, the 210 freeway. Um, we also make mention to Pointe Street as being a truck route, but if you look at the map off of, just past Villa Verde, Pointe Street is actually residential area, therefore, it should not be classified as a truck route to that boundary. Um, so, language like that, we just want to clean up there, um, and so, we plan to update and do a cleanup of the chapter itself, so there's no like ambiguous language there, so it's, it's clear and concise. Um, so if you look to the left, that's our current map that we do have, it does need some updates. To our right would be a potential updated, um, map that we would go ahead and, and put into place once, if we do decide to move forward with that. So, it's, uh, staff recommends that city council to direct staff to initiate this text amendment of 10.32.030 of the San Dimas Municipal Code to update the language to reflect specific truck route boundaries and routes. So, this concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, I had one question. So, Covina Boulevard, it looks like on the updated map, it would not be able to, to travel on Covina Boulevard, uh, past Bedello? Is that correct?
Um, so, we're just showing through the city boundary line.
Oh, I see, I see, okay, okay, thank you.
Yes. And just to be clear, we're not updating any of the routes, they're already existing. We're just making, uh, clear boundaries on where it would start and end.
Eric, that is a good observation, and Genevieve, just, it does show on the old map that Covina Boulevard, where, you know, Covina Boulevard goes and it turns into Bedello, basically, and it looks like, um, on the map on the right, the updated one, it doesn't continue on Covina Boulevard, whereas the old one looks like it does. So, it's, it's just an observation that, uh, whatever it should be...
And we can, we can edit that.
Whatever it should be, I have not...
Have it be consistent, yeah.
If there are no other, uh, comments or questions or suggestions, I would move to direct staff to initiate the, uh, municipal code text amendment on truck routes.
Second.
Any comment?
No. It's gonna second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Uh, good luck in creating something. Um, we'll wait to hear what you guys have to say for, for, on a four-zero vote, and I'm quite sure if Mr. Weber was here, he'd agree with it also. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As we know, item number two has been continued until January 10th, right? Yeah, okay, then we'll, uh, open the, uh, the city will now meet as a San Dimas authority to take required actions over housing authority matters, so the San Dimas Housing Authority meeting is now open. Ask for a motion to approve for, uh, December 14th, 2021. Uh, the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four-zero with one abstention. Okay, receive and file is audit, if someone would like to make a motion to receive and file it, or we want to talk about it.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries four-zero with one abstention.
I'm sorry, Mayor, uh, council member Nacanell was not present at those meetings, so the votes would be a three-zero.
For the minutes, you're...
For the minutes, but now, what about the audit? Okay?
Okay.
All right, all right. Approval of the 2022-23 Administrative Services Agreement with the City of San Dimas? Do I have a motion to approve and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries four-zero with one abstention? And here's the fun part.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate you as the chair of the, uh, authority.
I will second that. You're doing a great job.
Outstanding job.
All right, okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Uh, motion carries four-zero with one abstention? Do I have a, uh, executive director?
I'll move to appoint the city manager as the executive director.
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries four-zero with one abstention? Appreciate, did a great job last year, continue the good work.
Performance evaluation from the, uh...
Very soon, very soon. The city will now meet and as a San Dimas Public Facilities Financing Corporation, um, to take required actions over the corporation matters. San Dimas Public Facilities Planning Corporation, I ask for approval of the December 14th, 2021 minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries four-zero, one abstention? Appointments of the member of the corde, corp, corporation, the president? Do you have a motion?
I will move that, uh, Emmett be main president, and we call him Mr. President from now on.
Second for Mr. President.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries four-zero with one abstention?
I would nominate, uh, council, our mayor, Pro Tem Ebner, as the secretary treasurer.
Oh, I didn't even know.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries four-zero with one abstention? Okay? Now, we're gonna move to the really exciting place. Members of our oral communications, right? Okay? Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes, or as may be determined by the chair. Do we have any speaker cards, or would anybody like to speak to the council? Hearing none? We'll move to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the first Saturday of December, we held my favorite event, the Holiday Extravaganza, which is one of our largest attended event, was an absolutely fantastic evening. As you can imagine, putting on an evening of that size, uh, isn't possible with an all hands-on-deck approach, and so, staff from every department was involved, um, thousands of attendees, our vendors, the Chamber of Commerce, the downtown association, all of them were involved in putting on a remarkable event, and I hope to see that event continue in the future for many years because it's such a wonderful bringing of folks together from our community and the surrounding communities because it's an attraction to our city. In regards to overnight parking moratorium, as we move into the holiday season, the city will be implementing a moratorium on overnight parking restrictions starting this weekend, the early morning of Saturday, December 17th, and lifting the moratorium on Monday, January 2nd. No permits will be necessary to park overnight on streets, no citations will be issued for that type of violation, as it will not be a violation. Southern California Edison, uh, we have received tentative confirmation that we will be holding a special session, public town hall on Tuesday, January 24th, regarding power outages in the City of San Dimas. Funny enough that I'm reporting this, that even today, the city saw two power outages at City Hall, one that lasted approximately 20 seconds, that ran from City Hall all the way up to the north side of the downtown, I think Councilman Ebner, your house, uh, who won that game, by the way, of the World Cup, because I think you ended up missing it with the power going out?
Argentina did win, but yes, it went out right in the middle of the second half, and Leo Messi was doing good, but...
That apparently was a precursor to what happened in the early afternoon of a transformer explosion, uh, just west of downtown, that knocked out power to the area. explosion, just west of downtown, that knocked out power to the area. Because we had the power outage earlier in the day, Southern Edison was deployed already in motion before that transformer went out. And so, they were able to reroute power around the transformer, except for the area geographically contiguous to that transformer, and provide power back to the neighborhoods on the northern side, including Councilmember, your home, and City Hall, which facilitated us having a meeting, which initially, we were thinking, power would be out to midnight. Southern Edison has provided us some outage information. We're still reviewing that information, but we'll make that information available to the Council, and available for that meeting also in the future on the 24th of January. And we've asked that technical experts from Southern Edison, California Edison, be here to be able to make the presentation, have the discussion, have the conversations. And we look to having that as a meeting prior to the 7 o'clock Council meeting, and holding it in the senior center, to better facilitate the town hall environment and discussion. And lastly, as we're closing City Hall for the holiday season, at the end of next week, starting with Friday, the 23rd, in observance of Christmas and going through the New Year, returning the 3rd of January, I have to say that our staff have done an absolute remarkable job in this city. They fight hard to do the right thing, they use limited resources, and we hold each other accountable. And as the Audit and Councilmember Vienna had articulated, we've strived very hard to make sure that when we're presenting information, it is accurate. And we hope to continue to enhance our public transparency, continue to add information on our website, that the public can go and look for themselves for information, and not necessarily have to ask for that information. And so, I want to thank our staff, I want to thank your leadership, for all the support of our staff, and wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year for 2023. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll return it to you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I have no reports tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the City Council, Councilmembers' Reports on Meetings Attended at the expense of the local agency. Hearing none? City Council requests for future items, comments, and updates. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Few things. One, it's been a busy month for the City and the community. I want to thank the San Dimas Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber Mixer, I heard, was great. My professional duties did not allow me to attend, but my representative, my wife, was able to make it over there, and I heard it was wonderful. She'll be taking up some more paint lessons, I think, but it's a very abstract piece of art that came home. So, it's a winner. That being said, I appreciate all the effort the Chamber does throughout the year. Thank you for being a partner with the City. And it shows, just in all the different relationships we have here, that make our businesses successful, and this community successful. You guys help not only with the businesses, but very many aspects of what happens in this community for community events. So, I really appreciate that. The Holiday Extravaganza, Chris already touched on it. It was extravagant, it was fantastic. Thank you to all the City staff, all the volunteers, the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, everyone that helped make that event possible. It's never possible without the support of the community either. And so, the community turned out very much in strength, and it's always a wonderful event. I really appreciated the addition of the presents underneath the Christmas tree. I don't know who thought about that, but it helped complete the tree, and doesn't go without being noticed, much like this room. This room with the poinsettias and all the thought that goes into all of the different things throughout the year, I think show that we have a very thoughtful staff, and I appreciate that from all of you. People are very lucky, the public, the Council's very lucky to have a staff that is as thoughtful as you guys are. And I think we've really made strides, not only in the service we provide to the community, but even in the mindset that we provide to people. And I think a lot of that really has become noticeable in the last year or so, year and a half, watching the City kind of churn a page, if you will, in its history. So, well done. I attended the Benita Unified School District ad hoc meeting with Councilmember Nakano the other day, and there is a lot of collaboration that goes between the school district and the City. And I don't think that most people know it. I think people maybe that regularly attend our meetings here, hear about it. Some may be involved with the history of it. But there are so many people, both here and at home, and even elsewhere in the community and neighboring communities, Laverne and otherwise, and businesses, that really do work to support our students and our youth here in the community. So, I just want to say, in Chuck's honor, and as I've told him, you know, I promise to continue to work with the school district in a fashion that is collaborative for both the City and the school district, and I look forward to continuing that collaboration that will be modeled much after the Mayor's leadership, that Chuck spoke about. Last Friday, there was a bowling tournament. And one of the things that goes into, you know, not just being involved in government, but sometimes being involved in fun, is the relationships that you build, not just with City staffers or others, but your neighboring cities. And I have to give credit where credit's due to Mayor Robert Gonzalez, who just was sworn in again in Azusa, for, back in May, reaching out to me and saying, "Hey, Ry, get a team together, and let's have a bowling tournament, a city versus city bowling tournament, organized by an organization called Azusa Connects, which is a nonprofit in Azusa that supports a lot of good community causes." So, then, the City staff, and Michael, if you'd indulge me for a moment, participated in May. On May 26, I'll never forget, because it's my wife's birthday, but we went, and Michael and other members of the City staff participated in that tournament, and brought home the trophy, winning the tournament, and put San Dimas on the map, for not just San Dimas High School football rules, but apparently bowling does too. And not to be disappointed, but with the help of the Blacks, Deborah Black and her husband, and as well as some of Lauren Marshall, her husband, and then Commissioner Patrick Jones, and even myself and the City Manager were there. The Mayor came out and was present, supporting us. We brought home the gold again. Not just that, though. This was also a toy drive. And what we didn't know, when we got there, which was just going to be a bunch of us getting out there to defend the title, we didn't know that the winners would win all these boxes of toys from the toy drive that night. So, we got through the three rounds of bowling, and needless to say, Rosemead came in third, and they should be applauded. Athens came in second. They did well. But we won. And so, we brought a whole bunch of toys, and thankfully, we had a truck, we were able to get those toys that night. And collaborating with the Mayor and with Chris, it was decided that we would donate all of those toys to the Howdy Up Toy Drive that the San Dimas Sheriff Station did on Saturday morning in the Target parking lot. And so, it was a lot of fun to be able to take all those toys over there in the morning, and we were able to get those to them. And in talking with Captain Ashraf, you know, those toys will go back out to local families here in the community, to make their holidays a little bit brighter. So, I thank you to the Sheriff Station for putting together that toy drive. Thank you to the City staff for defending our honor and title. I'm told there will be another match. They're convinced they're going to try to win. So, I've asked Chris to add bowling to the application questionnaire for staff that come to this city. It's now a prerequisite, and they got to be 150-plus. And the other part of this is, thank you to Mayor Gonzalez and Azusa Connects for doing what you're doing that's not only fostering relationships between communities, but it's making differences in our community. So, I'm sincerely grateful to you for that. Lastly, I want to applaud Cindya and Chuck Coyne. It's people like them in the community that help make things happen, and that's what helps make this job easier. Those people, without people like them, who are really part of the fabric of this community, it would be difficult for us to do a lot of things. So that being said, as I reflect back on this year, and kind of to Chris's sentiment, I'm very proud of the community. I think we've come a long way from where we started a year ago. And I look forward to 2023, where we're going. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and we'll see you on the next slide. Thank you.
John?
Well, as Ryan says, there's a lot of appreciation to go around. I'll just mention our staff, and who do such a great job, and their hard work, and I really appreciate what they've done over the year, as so many people have said. And the one woman who came to the podium from the Montevideo Department listed a few things, just for that one place that we take care of. And it's really an honor to do that kind of a service to that person and the other residents. And it is a tribute to our staff for doing that, and of course, everything else that you do all year long. The Holiday Extravaganza was major. I was at the, still in the end stages of my COVID adventure, so I was not able to attend. However, I did drive to a spot where I could see the stage, hear Emmett announce the winners of the contest, hear the countdown, and the tree was right in front of me, and lit up, and it was wonderful. So, as somebody told me, San Dimas cannot be beat for the epicness of our Holiday Extravaganza. So, that was really, that was a treat for everybody who attended, and I'm sorry I missed it and wasn't able to be on the stage, but congratulations and appreciation to everybody. And just lastly, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody here, everybody who's watching, and looking forward to an even better year in 2023.
Thank you, John. We've had a busy year. A lot of things who've come out of the COVID swing. Oh, Eric, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, please continue.
No, no, no. I am sorry. I'm looking at these guys, and I apologize.
I don't mind. Do you want to proceed?
Nope.
Okay.
Everything hasn't been said yet.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. Emmett.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, four quick items, and I'll be brief. I just want to thank the City staff for their excellent work on the extravaganza. It was a great event, great attendance, and everybody had a good time. I know it was because of your hard work that made it possible, so thank you for that. I want to thank Margie for inviting me to be a part of the store judging of the decorations and all of that. It was beautiful. It's nice to walk around downtown and to see people get in the spirit, especially so soon after Thanksgiving, so thank you for that opportunity. I had a lot of fun connecting with the other members of City Council who were involved with that as well. I want to thank again the staff for having me at their holiday lunch. It was quite fancy. It was very nice, and I think it was well-deserved. It was good to see all of the people who won awards and were recognized for their service, and really, really appreciated the invitation, and to be able to mingle with some of the best staff that any city ever has. And finally, I want to thank Incycle for donating so many bicycles and supporting the Sheriff's Toy Drive. I had the opportunity to be there with the Mayor earlier today, to look at that and to see all the things that were donated. And it's going to make a lot of families very happy, especially in this time of celebration. So, I want to extend my thanks to them, to everybody. Have a Happy Holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, or whatever faith you may observe during this time period. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
My turn?
It is.
Okay. You know, we've had a great year. We came out of the pandemic swinging. You know, the staff, during that pandemic, they held true to the reputation that San Dimas is the finest city in this region. In my world, it's the finest city in the entire world. And I want to thank the staff for everything they've done. I just want to comment, one thing I even noticed, and I didn't give it a lot of thought till this evening. This evening, we had an employee, a staff member, from our Public Works Department, okay? And this last, this last year, maybe last year and a half, two years, I don't know if the rest of the Council has noticed, but I've noticed that what's happened is our directors have allowed their people to come up and speak, and give reports. And I think it's so enlightening to watch the younger staff members put everything together, make us be able to understand it. They're always available for questions. And I do see that the directors, they are sitting out there in the front rows, and all they do is shake their head positively. And I just think that, I want to thank the directors for having that foresight, because sometimes we forget that there are people actually doing the work, that we don't get a chance to recognize. And I think that's a growing opportunity for them to get up and speak before the Council, before the community. And I just wanted to say, thank you to all our employees for reaching out and trying to connect with, not only doing their job, but with this community. And that's just a great thing. Councilman Nakano mentioned the fact that today, him and I both had the opportunity to go over to the Sheriff's Station and meet with not only sheriff employees, volunteers. It was a comment that, excuse me for just one second here, I want to make sure I got this right. There was Incycle facilitated, and SC Velo, along with Impact Racing, Incycle, Specialized Bicycles, and numerous other anonymous donors donated unbelievable amount of toys, okay, of which the toys from the bowling tournament was also there. But the fascinating thing is, those four individuals, four companies, donated 97 bicycles to go to people in our community. Well over $50,000 worth of bicycles, and special bicycles for some people that needed it. I think that's pretty fascinating, and I wanted to thank the Monique Campos and Lieutenant Elizabeth Sacks back there. She was there representing the department, as unfortunately, the CO is under the weather. But the reality is, there were a lot of deputies there, and all of them's heart was in the right place. So, I wanted to just thank them, but majorly thank these people, these individuals who, you know, somebody has to be the boss, and they were the boss. They stepped up to the plate and donated these 97 bicycles, and they were nice bicycles, very nice bicycles. But that was a good thing. And as we talked about, the extravaganza, how can you say anything other than it was an extravaganza? I mean, I had not seen the new lights on the Christmas tree. I had not seen the packages underneath. Parks and Rec stepped up the game. The staff stepped up the game. So, it's one of those things, I think we all should be very proud of the people that work for us, and just like I'm sure they're proud to be able to show forth, show the work that's being done. There was a lot going on, but I did want to, and you know, I do want to say that I, from the bottom of my heart, with my wife and my family, wish everyone a Happy Holidays and a Merry Christmas, and we'll see you January the 10th. I have this, at this time, we will be going on into a closed session to discuss one matter with the Successor Agency and the City Council, Conference of Real Property Negotiators, Pioneer Square. And I believe John has to recuse himself?
Yes, Mayor, I will.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas.